I want to start this March sixth, twenty twenty four meeting, bring it to order. Wes will lead us in the pledge.
Ladies and to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, in the physical, with liberty and justice for all.
Mr. Young?
Well, I got a long history. I wanted to explain some of this. Uh, most of this is personal problem. You've been slammed. And uh, figure front, I can discount, but all of these are supplemental tax states which are not budgeted. And there's a couple of them like that. I want to point that one out. That was a fat finger mistake right there.
That's a.
That was put a one in front of the number which made it a hundred thousand instead of.
What it should have been.
What it should have been.
Yeah.
And they did that, hit the enter button, they created a tax statement and we immediately had to cancel it. But uh, so that, this is really not hurting us. I'm betting there. Ones that had the two vexes. I mean, it's two grid lines that were generated by real estate.
I'm moved that we approved these exonerations.
Second. All favor.
I'll make a motion to approve the refunds that was created due to the exonerations.
All favor.
Remember each of these refunds meant two places.
Vouchers and invoices. Mission heavy.
I had a couple of things. Um, one thing is I would like to. Postpone one of the reimbursements for uh, one of the fire departments submitted. A reimbursement that I'm not sure qualifies. And I want to check if I counsel. I'm at, um, so I want to postpone it. I'm sure some kind of, I, it looked like it was water cooler water. Yeah, like, like a, like for the inside of the department, it's like a five gallon jug of water or something. In the department, um. And. Another thing I wanted to point out is we did consult with our council and we are unable to reimburse. Uh, for gym equipment and that was a, what was it about? One thousand?
One hundred.
One hundred thirty something dollar purchase because it doesn't fall under the terms of fire levy. Um, and then third, um, I am reluctant to approve. After today, um, further submissions for the training center until we get a budget from the training center.
For me, you have one.
Yeah, one. I saw it was an insurance.
No, I need a budget.
From the fire training center? I'm gonna want to talk to them.
I was looking at your fire stuff together separate from your ready budget, so.
Okay, yeah, I didn't know we had a budget, so.
It's all within me and you, all in part. No, you, you got to compromise.
Okay, so I'm gonna wanna, wanna talk to the board members and stuff about. But, um, anyway, so with those exceptions, I'm able to approve the.
Can I make a statement, please? Even though NFPA fifteen eighty-three in subcategories state that it recommends that the fire departments have the training equipment. Uh, I've been told that state code overrides the NFPA. So just to make sure that you're with that.
But what do you mean?
It's the National Fire Prevention Association. They have a code fifteen eighty-three that states that people need to, firefighters and EMS workers need to stay in shape and they recommend that. Uh, the fire association or firefighters have a gym membership or work with local schools. Or also recommend having gym equipment in their, in their facilities.
Yeah, yeah, I mean, the, the distinction is if we had built that into the levy. Um, that'd be one thing, but we didn't build it into the levy, so the voters, the taxpayers. You know, did not vote to approve this type of expenses. That's the problem. Like it's, you know, there's, I don't think anybody's disputing that. Uh, physical fitness is critical for, I mean, I heard a statistic last night that fifty-six percent of the injuries or, or deaths are related to. Um, fitness, well, I mean, not fire, um, but. You know, without a levy language encompassing that, we're not going to be able to reimburse that sort of thing now. If they want to come to the commission and ask for funding in a different way, that'd be different. But for fire levy money, I, we, you know, our lawyer says that we can't do it, so. So my motion's on the table.
Do you know what specific ones they are so those can be pulled up?
There's only one for, for gym equipment.
No, the other, the five gallon water and the other ones.
There's just one for five gallon water, nothing else. Those are the only things that I'm, I'm just saying, I just wanted to make a statement about the training center because. I'm still trying to get my head around, you know, how the Fayette County taxpayers are benefiting from it since it's a five to one C three. So I, I just want to give them a chance to come in. I mean, Josh gave me some information about, you know, when training classes come in and tax dollars and when they say, but I just wanna. I just want to explore that more fully before we get into it.
Okay, second. Okay, sorry. Fire meeting minutes.
Oh, I have, uh, minutes for the sixteenth and the twentieth. Unless the third one made it in there too.
Sixteen, five, you mean, five third?
Yes.
Yes.
Okay, so sixteen, twenty, and twenty-three.
My motion to approve. All favor. They said escaped settlements.
Um, I'm moved that we approved them. I'll have a seat on the side.
Oh, I, I do. A second. You're in the green too.
Yeah, I do.
All favor. I got one. Uh, fiduciary commission, the government of San East.
Yeah, just something.
Okay.
Did you get a chance to look at this one? That's true, so my last one, I'll leave that real quick. I, I agree with this recommendation, so I, I'm moved that we, um, approved the recommendation of the fiduciary permission commissioner. In the small state of Jeremiah.
Second, all favor. Bruce?
All right, the first thing. It's your, how much of leg support, whether we all good with this?
We can check.
The support letter, not the state. Would you know this is.
The, did you, there was a change was made to it?
Well, so I think if y'all want to do one, you should vote because. It needs some edits.
Yeah.
So I mean, I, I'm moved that we definitely, um, approve and sign a support letter for plum water, but I would like to change the language because. Some of the language was committing us to funding the improvements.
Yeah. I agree.
So we do need to make a couple of edits, but, um, in concept and I'll just send the final round, make sure that they're.
Position, maybe?
Yeah.
Second, all favor. I, I would like to see the letter before I commit. Okay.
The letter?
Yes.
Do you, I mean, does anybody have a, a printout or anything of the, do you have? This, this is what it is. I mean, it's, it. It's basically a proclamation saying there need to be improvements at Plum Water Lake. The only issue I had with it was that it was, um.
Committing us to funding.
Commitment.
And the problem with that too.
After the, now therefore.
Making edits to it in the office.
You didn't get that, John?
No.
There should have been proper.
Should have been, yeah. Several of these items are the items that we raised with the state.
Yeah, I mean, it's, it's, you know, I don't think the state has had any interest in maintaining that.
Yeah, I've been, I've been a couple of years ago talking to them and.
Yeah, they've baked some batteries out and everything within.
No, I think they're there, but they had just had fortified.
They're just not in good repair. Shooting range is not a good repair, which is.
Okay, as long as the, uh, resources are not there.
There's a thing made a lot, well, Allison started making edits and it didn't get very far because it was our line because I got very frustrated. And so she comes back and the whole thing's coming, we learned it. It's the P pod acceptance of the P program which funds part of the letter control. Program officer. You guys have to approve it and send it back.
Yeah, motion to approve. Second. All favor.
And then this is the, the expense you were talking about. So I asked our, our lawyer to draft a letter, um, to the fire department requesting reimbursement for, no, this is not the one about. Let's say in the letter, it was only thousand, it says eleven thousand dollars. I'll like another.
Okay.
So we can. But, um, in the meantime, this, he cited the code and the, and the language just so they understand what, what the issue was. And, uh, so I moved that we approved this letter pending the correction of the amount. In, in here it says eleven thousand, it was only one thousand three hundred seventy-four dollars.
That's his last minute challenge.
Second. All favor.
Don't let your vote on that.
Yeah, so. I'll start speaking now.
Thank you.
She's still, she's still, she still has a problem.
I don't have a fix, Allison's.
I'm not fixed.
Wait, that didn't sound right.
Well, I mean.
Thank you.
I have a couple of problems.
Oh, workshops.
Well, I'm sorry, I got.
The, so this is basically a. A sample and then y'all will carry the name.
Except for the ARPA.
Yeah, it's about the workshops I want to have. So this is a letter to the, um, key players with regard to, well, the soldiers and sailors memorial building, the park meeting is actually today, but. We're setting up workshops for PSDs, um, funding municipalities and trails because those are high interest special. Issue areas, um, because we have four point five million in ARPA funding left. Um, largely because we had allocated three point five million of it to a broadband match for gig ready programs at the state level. And the state side of the funding built through. So now we're left with a lot of money to reallocate. We want to involve the community in trying to identify, um, grant matches and other sorts of things that we can. Engage in to, uh, spend it responsibly because it's a lot of money spent in a short amount of time. Um, so any other issues that fall outside of these special workshops, um, are going to be a subject of. A meeting that we haven't scheduled yet, but we're going to hold all of these other meetings. Um, just like we are this afternoon with the park and the memorial building meeting in the afternoon of. The day of a regularly scheduled public meeting of the commission. This letter is just informing, you know, the, the mayors, um, the trail coalitions and the people who have interest at PSDs. What we're doing, just to make sure they have a specific, um, invitation from us, so I think we approved the letter.
Second, all favor. When we just see. Nine fifteen. Let's see.
That I asked. What do I need to make up? What do I need to make up?
Okay. The, uh, presentation, Ben Bill?
Basically what I've done is take the, uh. Twenty twenty-two, twenty twenty-three actual expenditures, need one is, uh, of the cars. And apply a three percent. Increase for inflation, except for insurance. Where we applied a five percent increase based on what our interpreter says our insurance is going up. And also for the, uh, utilities. And I applied a four point one six percent increase for gas and an eight percent increase for water, which are. PSC just gave them those increases. And a, a one percent increase for electricity. I think the actual increase was point six three percent, but I rounded that up. In past years, we've been funded at sixty-nine thousand and fourteen dollars per year. And historically, the town of Fayetteville that's funded the fire department, placed last year at over two hundred and forty-six thousand dollars. So we were not able to fund some of these budget items. Through the levy because there just wasn't enough money there. So I've included the, what the town. Had funded on some of these and, and from our state monies. And even with those new monies included here. The town's share, if you looked at the last year's budget, would still be a hundred and sixty-one thousand, hundred thirteen dollars. And this budget is just over a hundred and sixty-five thousand dollars. That is a pretty much a fifty-one, forty-nine percent split. Between the monies that the town was paying for levy approval expenses that are now in this budget.
What kind of things were you unable to, um, purchase?
Main engine was the biggest. I mean, insurance, uh, you look on here. Wherever it is. Was thirty-eight thousand, two hundred fifty-four dollars last year. And that's the forty thousand is a five percent increase we're working at.
So the insurance, does it run through the city? Is that added to the city?
But it's part of, it's taken out of the fire department's budget or our part of it, and then the city pays it as a whole.
So that's on the engines and the liability?
Liability and workers compensation is mainly. Uh, we do have a small insurance, life insurance policy.
Right.
And a smaller health and, uh, access accident injury policy on our guys also.
Okay, so that's all under the insurance.
That's all under.
Was that, is that something that the fire levy can't pay for? Is that why you had?
No, they could pay for it. It's an allowable expense, which is, if we're getting sixty-nine thousand dollars and thirty-eight thousand of it is just for insurance, that doesn't really, maybe a lot more money for anything else.
Well, I'll tell you something from my, remind you, um, I, I never did agree with that. Allocation formula. I mean, I think, I think if you have an expense like this, then it needs to be covered. Especially when we have as much money on sitting in the levy that we do have. So, I mean, by all means, please submit it.
Some of the others is I did put in there the five hundred dollars a month for the chief. That's never been paid out a levy before. But it hasn't been allowable levy expenses and other departments have been using that over the years. And the computer software, that, that's something else that we, uh, put in there. Which is ignored utilities and our fire reporting, air station management software. So much of it we have to have to be able to submit our fire reports to the state financial companies.
So again, the grand total between, overall between the city and the county is a hundred and sixty-five, seven, hundred and seventy-three, is that correct?
That's the, that was what I'm proposing to be paid out a levy.
Oh, okay, I'm sorry.
The, the town would still be putting in a large chunk of money to the fire department if we're funded at the same amount.
Okay.
So going back to the insurance, I'm saying, was it Anstead, um, that sent me their info?
Yeah.
By quote from WB court and the, what company did you have? So we didn't look, but we looked at, I think it's Bill Bailey, but that's how familiar.
Actually, we have a policy with Bill Bailey, that's who our accident helped.
Yeah, so Bill Bailey is cheaper than WB court. It's like a better rating than where we're conversating long in the eye and I thought.
Well, we still have to go. I mean, we're part of the municipality, so whatever municipality, when they put out for bids, I think the same thing, yeah.
Well, you told the right people. It's next time around.
Chief, on this one, sixty-five, seven, seventy-three. You still get the state allocation of sixty thousand, right?
Yeah.
So that would be subtracted from that leaving a balance of one oh five, seven, seven, three.
If you want to take our statement and tell us how to use it, but the state money is only, there are like fifteen specific things under state code you can use it for. Can't use it for everything.
Thank you.
And we also, we try to save that money up. They don't pay for our water purchases like our engines in the past, that's what we've done. So that we can finance our engines. In the levy term, if you want to buy one, due to the past truck replacement policy. So, yeah, right now you're looking at, we looked at what they call a program truck that will respond to our. And it means it's basically built like a multitude. In other words, it's the same truck. You don't get it, you can't. Change anything, can't design it the way you want to design it. They built the same type truck, different color, it's like stuff. It was five hundred fifty thousand dollars. Somersville just bought a custom truck where you can design it where you want. It was one point one bit. So when we're saving up the state money that you're talking about, the sixty thousand. You save, or I've always done, save that up so that we had a large down payment. So that with the truck replacement money, we were able to take it off in the levy period. So we didn't have to finance it beyond the levy period because you don't know what's going to happen next year. So that's what the state money has been used for historically.
It's also dependent on year to year, right?
Yep. Yeah, you never know what the legislature is going to do. They were very kind last year, but they did not last year and they, they increased. By payment usually around fifteen thousand a month. They increased one month's payment. Fourteen thousand dollars, just one month out, one quarter, I'm sorry, one quarter.
Be honest with the others, we won that.
Yeah, that was unfortunately a problem, but problems that was, they use monies from the excess to fund it. There was, there is no dedicated funding stream for that. And I'm not, I haven't got one of those, what's like to see if they have changed that or have, have a dedicated funding stream for that this year. Now, or if they're going, but anyways.
I don't think they need one. I mean, they passed a bunch of unfunded mandates over the past couple of years.
Yes, exactly.
We've been figuring even a couple of them ourselves.
Yes, it was an unfunded mandate. And the only thing I do have in here, uh, as you see it, is I did propose, um. Capital outlay of twenty-one thousand, six hundred thirty dollars, which is new. And as you both, we have to have annual, it's required to have annual sprinklers. And fire alarm tests, what you have at our station. And we found that our system is so old, it won't throw the right codes to nine one one center. So in other words, if we get a alarm, it's the, uh, trouble. So we did, we need to upgrade that. Yeah, I think it's all the work period. So that's, that's what that amount is.
Who's your sprinkler company put that system in? The brewer? Is that who you want to put it in?
Well, we'd have to fit it out because it's that much volume.
Yes.
Basically, most of the, most of the sprinkler alarm system.
Unfortunately, some of the other sprinkler companies went out of business and brewers gotten that much larger.
And it's a, it's like when you're, like, we don't like to look at this, it's in city limits, outside of, but. Twenty twenty, calendar year twenty twenty-three, sixty-eight percent of our emergency responses were outside of the city.
I was wondering about that. I asked. So do you have that formulas figured out to give us? I'd like to look at it. Whatever it is.
The call?
Yeah.
Basically, it was me printing off the calls.
I mean, just, I'm curious because I asked for it before. Hopefield gave, gave me one.
I can make it. You know, he has a hundred and ninety-two calls outside of the city.
What's the question?
Well, I think calendar year twenty twenty.
What was inside the city limits?
Ninety-two. Ninety-two, one hundred and ninety-two outside.
Where are those? I mean, how far do you guys have to go on this?
Our district covers all the way to back of the Tottenham Bridge and to the top of the mountain. It covers out, it looks about water plant roads somewhere in that area and then what we could go to the city limits, out here on nineteen. Back through the hill, over.
That includes mutual aid too, right?
Yeah, they include automatic.
Oh.
And we, across the river.
Mutual aid, we don't want us to have to go mutual aid. You don't have to go, but I mean, you can use.
We have automatic aid. Every department in the county has an automatic aid agreement for structure department. So that there's always at least two, usually three departments that plan on structure fire. Beyond that, we have automatic aid for certain routes. Bit of those, like across the river, at Anstead, out Chestnutburg, it's hard to say where on Chestnutburg, right, there's, there's an accident, right, so we're better there. And then we cover, like Mayor reminded me, we cover, uh. Twenty nowhere doors, Smills Branch on nineteen and all out through A R G and got halfway to line. Hundred bridge.
Thanks.
Thank you guys for your time and, and thank you for telling me.
Oh, one thing I will add is that the, the town is under, we have, have to have its budget in for the state by the end of this month. So as soon as you could give us information about that might affect the.
We have a similar deadline, so.
I didn't know if that applied to levy funds.
Um, no, it doesn't apply to levy funds, but we thank you for providing that. So we'll just make sure we make a decision.
Yeah.
You know. Chief Tom just said that, um, we should probably do that on the same cycle and I agree. Um, so we'll, we'll start it this year. We, that's the reason we set that deadline for you guys. Was so we could get it all in by the budget side.
Prove something like January, February, so for municipalities, so y'all can make a decision. And have it in formation for the town, for the municipalities.
Yeah, we have presentations in February.
We, we do start doing budget presentations in February because we have to meet every three days, so last by code for other reasons, the Board of Equalization and Review, so.
Okay, uh, it's nine thirty, public hearing.
In your packet, if you have time to review it, is a, um, change in land classification. So I'll read the case number, um, Z dash five, three, nine, dash two, four, dash one, it's request of Sean Bramble. Who is currently going to be an occupant of a property to change land classification from a non-conforming rural residential. From a non-conforming rural residential district of Z three, which is our tourism district. Um, it's on property legally described as eighteen point seven one Mill Creek. Um, the planning commission that Monday and the four members voted unanimously, so approved his request. Um, but we do, he is here. Um, if you have any questions for him, um, but you guys should have his presentation.
I looked over that. I'll be, I don't have a problem with the commissioners will look over.
Yeah, first I want to commend you for your responsible approach to this rezoning question because you work with your neighbors and and you. Gave a lot of information to the planning commission to enable it to make a quick decision and the same for us. So. Um, you know, that's, that's definitely the way to go about it. Made it easy on yourself. So I don't have a problem with it either. What about you, John?
I mean, the information that was presented was straight. I mean, all the I's were dotted, all the T's were crossed and. It looks good. Yeah, I, I, it was very well put together. I looked at it and said, oh, that's wrong. I'll motion to approve. All in favor?
Welcome to God's.
You've visited here multiple times when I've read about you.
Yeah.
In fact, I got a letter from you also about some property.
Oh, yeah.
I think you sent everybody in big county a lot.
It's good to be here.
Absolutely. Glad to have you.
You're good. You're good.
Yeah, it was easy.
I don't know whether we can start. We got, go back to Ruth. We got, oh, yeah, we could, yeah.
I mean, you're dilapidated. Request was had to level home, but there wasn't enough or level one part.
Right, right.
And there wasn't enough money to do the whole thing and y'all have, so put it back on and discuss it.
Now, did he commit to to funding the rest of it himself?
He was open to options is what are discussed. I mean, we never discussed anything that I told him was my decision, but he was open to any type of options.
Well, we need to, before we vote on anything, we need to have specifics. So. Um, so the background on this is we had grant money. Um, for from REAP, the REAP program that we had to spin down quickly because we weren't organized enough. When we first received it and we didn't spend it down quickly enough. So. We haven't been as discriminating as we would be with where we're spending the grant money, grant money to tear down these dilapidated buildings. Um, in the future, we're probably going to have some more strict criteria, but we, we wanted to make sure we're going to be eligible to apply for it again. So it's not going to waste. I mean, these, but but people who may not be in as much need as the people who will serve in the future. Um, are getting some help. And among them is the owner of, is it Shiloh? Which trailer park?
Yes, it's Shiloh. Whatever I do is a Shiloh.
Shiloh, so um. We had some funds left, but not enough to do the, some of the demolition at Shiloh. Um, and the question before the commission was whether if the property owner paid. I think half of the demolition fees, if we could use the remaining, how much money was it?
There's eleven thousand.
Eleven thousand dollars of the grant and and that will cover the, all the applicants that we've had that we were considering. So. Um, but the thing we need to do is if you would get with Wes. And reach out to the property owner and see what the property owner is willing to do. And then we'll get it on next week's agenda. Um, to make a decision because.
No, I mean, it's asked, we have um, done a process or no. And I know the property owners willing to do the process or no, but that would be if you guys, you want him to make monthly payments or you want him to do a.
I would say if he can do it upfront, I'd rather him do it upfront.
Yeah, that would be up to you. So I'll reach out to the property owner and make sure he can.
Yeah, I mean, even something in writing. I mean, I, I think that's one of the things I told me to let you. I think I can tell it myself and ask. If he would write something up, it's a suggestion. And then he get presented to us or you give it to us and then the commission has something to look at.
Yeah, I'll be more happy to reach out and tell him. I know one of the things that you guys wanted to claim off his property as well, but.
Yeah, well, I'm, I'm going to say, yeah, I would like. Wes Anthony's office to be involved in in that discussion.
I do think that he has reached out to the prosecutor's office.
Okay, well. Um. If you can reach out to him and engage him.
Yeah.
That would make me feel a lot better because then they can make sure that whatever comes in in writing is in a form that is acceptable.
Do you want it in writing or would you like him to come through?
Both.
Both.
I would like him to work, you know, and if you need a couple of weeks, I mean, you know.
Yeah, I'll see what he needs.
Okay. If we have a meeting over the week.
Just mention, I mean, the standard procedure, which is what we've been working towards is placing the lien. Based on how much money we be spending. And so this may be one where we actually revert back to the standard protocol. And instead of charging the homeowner the full amount, putting the full lien, we expand whatever we have. And then the lien is whatever remains.
Remain bound.
And then they can pay that upfront to remove the encumbrance or what. So this may be a good scenario of transition to the lien process as well. Depending on how the homeowner wants the structure process. I just want to say this is not outside the normal. In fact, this may be a good transition to how. You know, it will be in the future.
Okay, thank you. All right, so um, I'm moved that we. Habled this until Angela's at the back on the agenda.
So the appointments? Budget information appointments.
Okay, so right.
Don't we need to do the same thing? I'm sorry, John. You're, I apologize. Number six, we want to postpone because we've got the information.
Right, so that'll be on. Next.
Thirteen.
Thirty.
Okay, so we, I'll make a motion into postponing number six until next week.
You know, know about that?
I know, okay.
Okay.
This, the planning commission is.
Just Joe Ray or just Joe Ray? Because the other two have already been reappointed.
Okay, the letter says all three, but it's just Joe Ray. Because the others have already been reappointed.
All right, well, I'm moved that. We reappoint Joe Ray to the planning commission and his term of office would expire. Amy, in the letter, it says August third, twenty six, but in his letter to us, it says August third, twenty five.
It should be twenty six.
Twenty, okay. All right, so my motion's being.
Second, all in favor? Okay. Next, is this with John? Okay, um, I received a call last week. That the CBS in Valley Bridge is closing. Uh, went down to do some investigations and indeed they are. I submitted it to the commission. Like usual, business, anytime that there's an action, we can't make that action until we're actually in session. Um, so we're a week behind on sending a letter to CBS corporate to let them know that the citizens of that area, along with the. Commission, so it be deemed that we would like them to reconsider their decision. Uh, by doing so, it would save a lot of time for our citizens down in Valley Bridge area. Uh, and surrounding areas to get their pharmacy needs. Uh, and general drugstore needs. So that was the information that was able to gather. Did you want us, was this about a letter?
What are we a week behind doing?
Sorry, Tom was talking. Okay.
I, I, I was asking what we're a week behind in doing.
Oh, if just the information came in after our last meeting that we had, so we couldn't do a. That sounds, that's okay. Um, we, uh, we were not able to, to approve anything until we actually met. So. I would love to send a letter to CBS corporate. Even though they've selected a date at the end of the month that it will be closing. Just to uh, voice our opinion.
Well, I, I think, I mean, I, I agree that. You know, it states that they're closing that pharmacy. That just keeps happening in the valley. I don't know how much we can do about it since they already have a closing date established, but I do think. We ought to um, reach out to. Anybody. I don't know what entities, maybe N R D, R D A, but but maybe see if we can attract a. Community pharmacy to set up down there or something. You know, CBS might not be able to afford it with all that it does, but you know, it's possible a private. You know, entity might be able to afford just to provide that service. I don't know how pharmacies make their money exactly, but. Um. So I mean, I, I don't mind. Approving a letter. We don't have any texts drafted yet.
Well, if I did, it would lead because the way that you do such a good letter.
So apparently, O'Keele calls it the roast process and I'm the county roaster.
Where you're done, you write something up, you give it to Amy or Ruth, and then it goes to Ms. Taylor. And then it's tore all apart and redone. So start, start it, John. I've been through a three or four person process to her before.
There was a grammar error in a headline of an op ed I wrote that wasn't mine. So. Hit me back.
If, if I may, if, if you're willing to try to get them to do something, they, CBS, when they leave, they put the. Uh, whatever you want to call them, on buildings where they can't be used for pharmacies. That's what happened to us and they, and they instead, Mary probably more about getting another pharmacy move in. The way they set that building up when they leave, it's got ordinances with it where it cannot be used. They, they owned it and when they sell it, it has covenances on it. And it was for indefinite, so they had to build a pharmacy in Anstead. So if they would at least not put the covenants on it. Then another pharmacy could possibly move in.
See, I heard somebody else owned this building. I heard CBS didn't own this building in Gully Bridge.
Well, that'd be good.
That's what I heard. I, I don't know. I haven't checked. But I heard. And you know, in a buyout or they usually they, if they're moving out, they got two more years. They have a certain amount of money they pay. And then for that two years, you can't put one in for two years if they don't own it. I mean, I've seen what you talked about. So I mean, but I heard they getting under the building. That's what I heard. So I don't know. I'm just, just.
Yeah, I don't know if it found out. That's a really good point. Thanks for bringing that up.
I could probably look here if we take a break or something.
Yeah, I'll have to hear that. Okay, so I mean, I'm, I'm, I'm moved that we approve. Sending the letter and and we can include the covenant language in it if um. If we learn that they own the building.
Check. All in favor? I, you gonna start the letter, John? Yes, okay.
Going through the four, the four person process. Can we get number nine?
The next one is a appointment of Michael Martin to the Fed County Library Board.
Okay, so we have a letter from the. Library Board requesting that we appoint Mr. Martin. Um, I'm moved that we approved his appointment.
Second, all in favor? Aye. Number ten.
Okay, that is to set early voting locations to the Bay Harbor primary. There's a green back, Green Valley, United Methodist Church in Danes. Montgomery Community Center, Fed County Schools and Salem, more in the building.
So it's the same ones we've always had in show?
Yep.
My motion to approve, second, all in favor? Michelle, how's um, how's poll workers coming?
Well, both executive committee was voting against service yesterday.
Why are we really?
Yeah. We got it yet, so that did not happen.
Okay, well, I'll, I'll take action on behalf of my. Parties executive committee.
That's okay.
I'll tell you what, coworkers are harder and harder to approve.
All right. Ms. Green?
Hello, everyone. My name is Arnie Screen. I am a public affairs specialist with the Small Business Administration. First, I want to apologize because I'm here for the declaration that took place. Uh, August of twenty twenty three. So Ms. Taylor, please don't roast me. Okay, I'm here today to present um, a program that we have for businesses and nonprofit organization. Fayette County is a continuous county. That means that um, SBA theme I deem that it was not enough damage here to uh, deem it a primary county. But. Fed bill businesses and nonprofits are eligible to apply for a disaster loan. And. The deadline for the economic injury is October thirty, twenty twenty four. And a good thing about this is. You don't, you do not have to have any physical damages. The damages comes from lack of sales, um, loss of income. So. There's a fifth way of up to thirty years. There is no payment, no interest for the first twelve months. And business can borrow up to two million dollars. And this is to the community back to where they were before the disaster happened. You know, it takes six months to a year before a business. Um, and even a nonprofit to notice that there is a decrease in their sales or money coming in. So we're here to help you get back on your feet. Hopefully, this will be a benefit for your community. I will leave a couple of files at the door along with my business card. Feel free to give me a call if you have any questions or concerns or need help um, with the application. So at this time, um, do I have any questions or concerns?
One question.
Sure.
Did you say Fedville or Fed County?
Fedville is, is within Fed County, right? Yeah, so you are eligible.
So just Fedville?
No.
No, she means.
The entire county.
Right.
Okay, I'm, I'm, I'm going to clarify, make sure.
Yeah. Right, you don't have to have any physical damages. So we um. We try to get everybody in on this because it's a good, it's a really good deal. Sure.
I wanted to ask you too, have, have you been able to present to the city of Silver?
Oh, I'm just getting here. I'm Louisiana. Okay, so I couldn't leave till I got the crawfish. And that's why I'm like, I had to wait for crawfish. It's, no, I'm just kidding. But yeah, I'm making my rounds. So they will probably be next on my list to present.
Okay, uh, the reason I ask is because they were heavily impacted by the flood and I think there are some businesses right there. That, that were affected and may benefit from this program.
Homeowners too.
Well, this is SBA, small business.
Oh, we do homeowners. What county are they in? Thank you. What I would do, I would take them back to my managers and I would let them know that they did have. Um, homeowners and renters that had physical damages. So we're going to try to see what we can do to help them out.
Absolutely.
Yeah. It's kind of, you know. In the area, this, you, you guys remind me of Vermont. And everything is like, you might go drive. A couple of miles and you may not see anything. Then all of a sudden, you see a city. So it may be that they di- didn't know or didn't get this far out, but that's what I'm here for, to get the information and to rely back to them. So I will uh, pass this on. So I will uh pass this on and I will get in contact with them and I'll see what we can do.
I got one more question.
Sure.
What's the, what is the allocation for this application? You said two million dollars, but what do you have in funds right now?
What does the government, federal government have in?
Usually they have allocations for certain things.
They don't tell us that. Yeah, they only give me a need to know basis. Okay, well, I do appreciate you guys and I thank you. And um again, if you have any questions or concerns, don't hesitate to reach out.
Thank you, ma'am.
We will put this on our uh website.
I really appreciate that. Okay, and I will leave some flyers at the door they can pick up on the way out.
Okay, um Amy, why don't you stand that way? Send a copy to Kevin.
Yes.
Thank you, ma'am. Do you wanna, y'all wanna take a break? Maybe you wanna hit the brown.
Amy and Sarah's already found the company that I said CBS building.
We have to make the edit to that letter, too.
It could be a developer also developing. Yeah, break. Good. Ten minute break. All right, bring the meeting back to order. On to uh uh now move to ten o'clock there and Ruth is Matt.
He is on second or will he? Four, Matt four.
Good morning.
Matt, you wanna talk a little bit about this?
Sure. Can I share my screen? Let's see. All right, can you all see my my screen? It should be a U S C P A form. Hello?
Well, okay, I have an issues there.
Can you all hear me?
You know, the machine didn't say it's recording.
Matt, are you unmuted on your end?
I am.
Yeah, Kevin said he's talking. We just can't hear him.
Oh, we can't hear him.
Hey, Matt, we can't hear you.
Well, we're, it's on our end because Kevin can hear him. So we need to.
No, it was just working. Mission, are you able to hear me? Matt, can you hear me?
Yeah, I can hear you.
All right, I think we're, I think we're going now.
Awesome.
All right.
Amy to the rescue.
Yep.
All right, I want to share my screen. Can you all see the C P A form?
Yeah, yep.
Okay. So in uh two thousand twenty two Fayette County received a E P A, um U S Environmental Protection Agency uh community wide assessment grant. And that grant period runs from October first two thousand twenty two to November or September thirtieth, two thousand twenty five. So we've got uh little less than two years to get that uh grant wrapped up. And the total budget is three hundred seventy eight thousand nine hundred and seventeen dollars. Um the grant was written with Oak Hill being the target area. However, um the grant can be spent anywhere in Fayette County. It doesn't necessarily be have to be in the target area of Oak Hill. And it can be used for things like Phase One environmental site assessments, Phase Two environmental site assessments, additional environmental assessments that are needed at a site. Uh it can be used for asbestos inspections, mold inspections, radon inspections, lead based paint inspections, and site reuse planning. Um I'm seeing these grants be used to cover costs for property redevelopment uh for boundary surveys, structural evaluations of buildings. It's a, it's a really good grant to have to spur uh site redevelopment in your county. And it's uh pretty flexible in what it can be used for. When you have a site, forms get submitted to EPA to get approved. They approve the property and then you can do the work underneath, under the grant. Um to date, we've spent about six thousand dollars of that grant. And that was just the uh the required plans that EPA requires to be in place uh before the assessments can be taken, can be done. All those plans are are completed now, so we're ready to uh to do the site assessment work under the grant.
And Matt, don't mean to interrupt you, but we we have properties that need, that presently we have properties that need a site assessments, correct?
Well, I've been working with Amy. There's some sites um we're planning to do a pre demolition asbestos inspections. But as far as other properties that have uh needs for environmental assessment, uh one of them I'm going to present today that's in Fayette County, but I'm not aware of any others. So that's part of the discussion is maybe getting the word out that these funds are available. Um the the property does not need to be county owned. It can be privately held. Um we're the the D E P has a similar grant. Their their grant total is in the millions of dollars. And we do um phase ones, phase twos, all the things that I mentioned across the state of West Virginia on, you know, private party deals where one, one company is buying a piece of property off of the other. Um there are some stipulations to that. Um like if it's a, if it's a gas station and a Phase One environmental site assessment and Phase Two were to be done and then contamination found and the responsible party is viable, that person cannot get out of their legal responsibilities to clean up a site. Because, you know, because brownfields was used. So they want to make, that's, that's one stipulation. So they do a petroleum determination before they approve the property. So each property goes through an approval process.
So there's a piece of property at Pax that has a uh overfilling station there. I drove down and looked at it the other day. You know what I'm talking about?
Yep.
Could that be uh assessed?
Yeah.
Okay.
Yeah, um we would, we, again, the the state makes the petroleum determination to see if the owner of that gas, gas station would be responsible for contamination. Um because they're required to have insurance and there's all kinds of requirements for people who own underground storage tanks. But um yeah, we could, we could see if uh the funds could be used.
I think still the property needs to be the land itself.
So did you hear that, Matt? And Pax said that the tanks were gone.
Oh, good.
Still, I believe the property needs to be assessed.
Can I ask a question? Did he say structural, like the building structure can be evaluated?
Yes.
So I mean.
Because you know, we talked about using the jail or something else. But we don't know if those, the thought is those bars hold the floors up so you couldn't take those out. Could you not, would that be a feasible use?
That sounds.
Because that's a lot of space.
Yeah, that sounds good. I mean, Matt. What do you think about that, Matt?
Does it qualify, do government buildings qualify? We can use this for the memorial building.
We talked about it. We were also talking about initially they wrote it for
Collins Middle School.
It was written for Collins Middle School.
Oh, that's right. But I didn't know who owned that now.
I don't know.
Nobody does.
Nobody knows.
I don't think anybody can be, we use it.
So we can use it for the jail.
I mean, that's a lot. I don't know what it was cost, but then you know, you could use that space.
Well, I mean, yeah, yeah.
It's a lot of space.
So I've talked to Amy and and Angie a little bit about this. And I I think what between the consultant, which is Matt and and Amy, I think we need to approve some type of uh for you all to assess these properties as they come up, or does the commission think we should go one by one? I think they should have a little bit of leeway when these properties come in that they have the, they can use the money to have it assessed. I mean, I don't know how y'all feel about it. And Matt, if you want to speak up about it, Amy, to give your thoughts on it to the commission. Be up, don't worry about.
When you say they, who do you mean?
It's it's Amy and the consultant, Matt. I mean, it does, every piece of property have to come before. I mean, I'm just asking, give us some type of leeway to have it assessed.
I think if there, I mean, I think if there's expenditure funds, then yes, I think we, I mean, I think we would have to, it would have to come before us.
Okay, correct.
Ruth is the authorized um on the grant. She is set up as the authorized um I can't remember exactly the wording for it, but she's the one that signs off on everything on the grant.
Up to fifteen thousand.
And you are, and that was approved in, well, no, that's just for the, the grant itself. Um she's our.
Authority is what he was talking.
Oh, okay. And so you all um in an open meeting um approved for her to have that.
What, what quantities, like what kind of expenses are you talking about? I don't want to shut, shut that idea down without knowing.
Well, that would be a Matt, a Matt question because he's, he's gonna know the.
Matt, did you hear the question?
I did, and the, and the cost varies. Um what's typically done in a situation where there's a commission or a a a board of directors involved is it, you wouldn't like it becomes extremely inefficient and if every time a site is brought up, we bring one site at a time. Um but you know, there's time needed to uh to submit the EPA form. So we could, we could submit the forms and get approval. Um and then before the first dollar spent on the property, we could provide a list of properties for you to to approve. It would, it would name, it would, we could give the the property address, the owner, what the use was, and then the estimated cost is you, you could approve those um multiple at a time.
See, my, my thing is we've held up so much, I don't want to hold up progress of getting this stuff done like we did to dilapidated properties for a year, two or five years, whatever the commission did. There's got to be an easier or faster way to get this stuff done. And that's what I wanted to talk about today.
Well, I mean, I'm comfortable with what he just suggested, them going ahead and and applying for things and then before the money is spent, giving us a list of properties that we can prioritize expenditures on. I mean, I'm, I'm entirely comfortable with that.
Okay, yeah, I am too. I I just don't want to see somebody pull them trigger without us approving. I mean, and I don't have a problem. And I, and I don't have a problem with that, but we need to start assessing these properties. I mean, it's been a year. We need to start assessing these properties and start moving forward with it. That's one thing I wanted to talk about today.
Okay, and I also don't object if we come up against something where we need to make a decision. We don't have a meeting that was in schedule one for that special meeting. But I'm fine with that, too.
Okay.
But um no, I mean, so I'm, I'm fine with that. I don't think we have to vote on that process. I mean, it's just not obligating funding. I I don't, there's a problem with we, you know, we've authorized Amy to apply for grants and all kinds of other things without, you know, prior permission unless it requires a match. So.
Okay, so so Amy and Matt, I guess you know what to move on, just to go ahead and start the processes.
The, the, I think the link, the problem is that the application to the D E P to get approval from them is a lengthy process. And so that's why we need to go talk to them.
So you're wanting to be more efficient by not submitting a lengthy application if we're not interested in the property.
So would you like us to? I mean.
I don't want to waste anybody's time.
Yeah. Matt, you want to speak to that? Maybe I.
Yeah, I mean, it's, it's a form that needs filled out. I mean, it's not incredibly difficult. Now, does it make sense to fill out that form if it's something the county's not interested in? Um no, not at all. But um you know, if we the really efficient way to do this is if you had a list of, of like we would have, hold a commi- community meeting and um or a series of community meetings, and then you would get a a big list of sites and then prioritize those sites and then prove them all at one time. Um we haven't went through that process just because we were, I know we were waiting on the uh the demolition project and um adding in the asbestos inspections for that. But you know, we could spend some time initially um just developing that list of sites.
I like that idea. I think that's, you know, a great idea because Matt's a consultant, so I definitely don't want us to encourage him to apply, spend the time and money applying for things that we're not going to approve. But it wouldn't be that idea to get all of these. You know, a list of properties together, even if we do it, you know, quarterly or, you know, twice a year or whatever we decide to do and review it.
And even if you send a letter to municipalities and they can have community meetings, see what's in there because, you know, to help them out.
And that's a component of the grant is that we have a community involvement, um community participation um component. So um Region Four did a survey, kind of like what we did for the dilapidated housing and then um prioritized based on that input. So we could, um I could reach out to them and see how they went about theirs. And that would count.
Okay, just let us know. We can set that up.
I mean, if if you want me to go ahead and um reach out to them and get that, get that going.
Yeah.
Okay.
Said we maybe bring it back up on the thirteenth.
Yeah, and just make sure, Matt, that you guys have together whatever the requirements are for these properties qualify so we don't have to sort that out later.
Yeah.
All right, I know there's something else you wanted to ask Matt and all this.
Well, it was just uh one, one site in particular. I wanted to see if the county commission had interest. We could discuss it now or I could just add it to the list later.
I mean, it would be, it's not gonna postpone it to add it to the list later, is it? Do you need it now?
No, it's, it's regarding, it's a property adjacent to the Meadow River Rail Trail. And uh we've been working with New River Gorge Regional Development Authority and we're not quite ready to have uh Fayette County grant funds used to remediate it. So we've got time.
We'll wait then. Okay, and then is this gonna be rescheduled?
We'll just re, we'll just restart it.
I'd like, but we're gonna talk about this again on the thirteenth, on the uh sites. I'm hoping. So you're gonna have a list of all the sites by thirteen, not all of them?
You'd have to have community involvement.
Oh, yeah. Well, we, I think we already have some sites.
We have about twenty, actually probably more um voluntary consent forms from um the list we've been compiling for the D E P um round two grant um that we can go ahead and do assessment, um asbestos assessment on. And um so I've been working on that list and been working on the one oh sixes for those. Um and then we have Memorial Bloodings Jail, the piece of property he mentioned in Pax, the um piece of property in um adjacent to the Meadow River Rail Trail. So there's, there's a good list to start with.
Yeah, I don't mind, I don't mind starting with, you know, we already have several properties.
Yes, that's, yeah, I'm, I want, I want to like to get started with what we do have.
Okay.
I mean, if that's okay with the commission.
No, it's fine with me. I just didn't want to go in if we only had two.
No, I knew, I know, I mean, I knew we had, I knew we had a few.
Twenty, you know, plus, you know, what Ruth suggested, I think, and what Matt's got on. Matt, is that enough time for you to have more information on that Raynaud property?
Oh, yeah, yeah.
Okay, so so uh move to postpone to the thirteenth.
Second.
Thank you.
Okay, ten fifteen. Oh, I'm sorry. Yeah, ten fifty or both of them. I'm sorry.
Yeah.
Apologize.
With stream mediation, I would like to go into executive session, get council's input.
So this meeting back to order. We had advice from our attorney. Uh no decisions was made. John, you want to take the help on this?
Sure. Um we went into executive session, discussed stream mitigate or cleaning out the streams from all the logs, back backup, cause flooding. Um we have four streams that have been identified. Paint Creek gunning through Pax, White Oak Creek, that's going through Carla. White Oak Creek, that's going through Carville, Scarborough, down into Glengene. Dunluke Creek, which is the area from Glengene going down toward the river, and then Smithers Creek, that's coming up out of Callington Hollow. Um, those are four priorities that we would like to set, or I would like to see us set as commissioned, if it's okay with the other two. Um, these are priorities that I've been working on for a while, and uh we got some good advice.
What was the second one? You said Paint Creek, Dun- Dunluke?
Paint Creek, White Oak Creek.
White Oak.
Dunluke and Smithers.
Okay.
White Oak Creek runs through Grand Storjeon.
That's Dunluke.
Okay, that came up the other day.
Yeah, we have photos of the blockages for there.
Okay. So we have some concerns. We want to make sure we identify our priorities to um Southern Soil, which is the Stream Mitigation Agency we're required to work through um for anything that's in the stream. And so um I'm going to move based on legal advice that we uh have our council draft a letter to Southern Soil, um identifying these priorities that Commissioner Brennaman just um put out and um asking them for an, an update of whether they've assessed these, because Commissioner Brennaman has referred uh them to these issues in the past. Um, find out what the holdup is and let them know that we're committed to prioritizing funding, uh our portion of the funding for uh this mitigation. That's.
Good.
End of my.
Uh.
Hi. Um, second, second matter is, we did have a tree, we've been, a citizen brought to our attention, a tree that's um over Smithers Creek, that's blocking it, having some issues, which is something we can address um outside of the context of of Southern Soil. And um we received a a low bid, um six thousand eight hundred dollars from the local contractor that's been doing all the creek mitigation down there. And um I'm going to move that we approve this bid to have that addressed. This is from some more fallout from the flooding.
Second, your own favor?
Hi. That's it for streaming motion, right? So the budget.
Budget. All right, now, I'm going to put my two cents worth in, and then ministers, you can
Take note.
Take note, but you said. I I'd like to talk about, one of the first things that goes on to talk about is there's an organization out there called Friends of New River Gorge Park and Reserve. I've talked with Jenna, and uh I'm supposed to meet with the gentleman, and I would like to see if there's money in the budget to allocate some money to uh do some recreational work inside of the gorge through the Friends of New River Gorge uh Park and Reserve.
What kind of um?
We can get, we can have any kind of good present, I mean, development and uh trail development and stuff like that.
Inside the park service land?
Inside the park service.
I have heard, and I don't know if it's true, um but from what I have heard from members of community and specifically um, well, I don't know, call and pay out, but but members of community who have approached the park service about um developing trails or redeveloping trails, the rail, some of the rail trails that are very evident that run through the park um that the park has not been receptive. So I think we definitely need to reach out and engage the park service in these discussions. Anything that we we set for this, I think we need to engage them, because we don't want to go through a bunch of machinations and have them say, sorry, even if you give us some money, we're not doing.
No, I I understand, no, and it should be, there should be something that in in there, we we request a certain area or a connection to the community.
Well, there was one connection, I'll refer you, first I was talking to you, that that came up. And and it was, so there was a specific example where they weren't open. And I'm not sure what the reasons were. I think part, part of justification, I think, has been that um maintenance of the trails.
Yeah.
So, so whatever agreement we would come up with, probably have to address.
Well, I I agree.
Some commitment on maintenance.
In fact, we, the commission, when I, when I talked to Jenna, the N R G D O and A is, we would, if there would be money allocated, we'd allocate on a condition, but then what the reason for this allocation is, they can then, if they have donors, if the commission decides to to help fund them, they can go after grant funding to do the, to help them with the work.
Is this that Rev. PJ and then formed?
Well, I I don't I think PJ's on it.
Okay. But the five oh one C, they're just getting their five oh one C three. I've known about, I don't know what they call it.
Yeah, N R G D R D A now is helping them with a director. I think they got a two year, now, I'm not on there anymore than you are, but the last conversation is they were helping them form, help with their organization, organize it so they can start implementing stuff, but they needed funding to help on after other funding.
So, John, in case you don't know, here's what I know about it, because I just heard about it when um there was a potential conflict on the park board with one of our members, who was going to be on, PJ Stevenson was going to be on. She thought she have, would have a conflict being on both, or maybe it was Melanie Haynes, but either, either way, it was one of them that was going to have a conflict with both. They were concerned, and it's a five oh one C three that stood up to kind of try to take on and fundraise for a whole, a wide range of projects that would benefit the county in ways that we weren't, wouldn't be able to to do. And so it's, it's not a specific politically minded, or, you know, there's no, it's not agenda driven in any particular way, other than to help, help the county with important priorities. Now, of course, it's its own board, and it it will be setting those priorities, but I think it, it does want to work with us on, on those things, on accomplishing things that we as a government can't. So um just based on things that we can and can't do, including fundraising. So um, that's, that's what I know about it, and there's probably a lot more that I don't know about it, but so, so you're, what you want to do is what, have, just have them present and see if we're among the things we fund in the budget?
Yeah, in fact, I'm going to have a meeting with the gentleman, the president. Um, I think he he just got back here recently, and I'm going to have to be sitting down and have a meeting with him.
So is that?
That's just one.
And when you ask for stuff for the budget, are you talking regular budget stuff? Are you talking about Barca funding or both? I'm worried about the regular budget. That's what I told you, I should have given all the specific information.
I will state it, I mean, parking about our bills is way out of the league, right?
I think that's what I thought separately than Barca, too, because of its trails and recreation, co-reallocated, they'll pay for that, because that's considered economic development, but you're really behind, have some type of plan.
Yes.
I was talking more along the lines, like, some of the stuff we heard, main society, store, um the transit authority.
What about deputies?
So that's what I need you to know, because you changed one thing in the budget, and it's like fifty tabs on that stupid spreadsheet. So I want an idea, because I've already started four. And they're like, as it is now, with only the insurance increase, because that's a fourteen percent increase, is be a few hundred thousand dollars most likely this year. I don't know what it'll be next year. Um, but you're also not going to get somebody else to write it. We tried, so you're probably stuck with P E I, even if it's like God only knows what it'll be next year.
Yeah.
Um, and then one, as presented, for what people actually requested, and then moving deputies, I might have to do more than one scenario, because it's like it's a pretty significant change.
Well.
And then is there any other special consideration you want to look at?
Well, personnel raises.
Yes.
Um not, not only our own, but, you know, the ones that I'd like to know, you know, where we have electeds requesting raises, like, in the, when those people ask on raise.
That's, that's the as requested budget that she.
Yeah, that was the as requested, basically, and I can make notes. Um, and then my other question is, please tell me you want this electronically, because when I say it's a fifty tab spreadsheet, each tab is like three pages long.
It is, I I I played with it.
It's a, it's an entire workbook. It's awesome when it all works right, but it's a lot.
And supposedly, there's no errors this year.
I'll hold my breath.
Well, move it, move the deputies over to see what that scenario is, is number one, I believe.
Right.
It's important.
Well, we got them, it's just how many.
Well, that's, that's what we, I'd like to know. I mean, he, he moved between six and ten, and you had said you thought we could at a minimum do six.
And that's at their current rate. That's not, it might not be with raises, it's going to depend.
Okay.
But I also think if you leverage your money differently, like coal severance and co-reallocated, just separate on the park. Like, you're talking about the art of funds for that, so that would be useful. But coal severance and co-re allocated can be useful there, too, especially, John said, they changed it, the twenty five percent in a way. It used to be your cap to twenty five percent, and that would limit the human society. But, I mean, they're doing pretty good as it is.
Yeah, they've made leaps and bounds.
They really have. I'm, I'm pretty happy with it.
Yeah, absolutely. Uh, they, they come a long ways in a short period of time.
Best meeting I ever attended this last time.
Yeah.
Really?
They just need to get up and started, get going. When you start something new, sometimes it just takes a while to get to groove.
Well, and it's not, something new is not a once a month discussion either, so.
Yeah, so change is not easy. You know, so but, yeah, we can use co-reallocated and co-severance, and, you know.
And like what you're claiming at the park, would affect the budget, too, so because normally you add and add and add to that budget, and then the memorial building, too, falls under the same thing.
So what do you need?
I want you to know, do y'all want to leave everything the same? Do you just want the scenarios I presented? Do you want across-the-board raises, or only as they presented raises?
I think we ought to do across-the-board raises.
Yeah, cross-the-board raises.
Okay, well.
It's called inflation, if you listen to the thing.
No, that is.
Well, the way we do across-the-board raises, though, is we give everybody X amount of dollars. I like percentages better, but Ruth had good arguments against percentages.
Well, percentages benefit your higher-paid people more than your lower-paid people, and your lower-paid people need to make more.
And, well, and I do want our lower-paid people to make more, so it might be more amenable to higher percentages for lower-paid people or something like that, but I like, I like merit-based merit-based raises, not, um, you know, except for cost of living.
So I want merit-based, and I'm probably not going to be very popular for this. There are not very many people that can objectively evaluate their staff.
Correct.
Because we don't have any processes and things.
Even if you had a process, I can guarantee you they can't objectively, I mean.
Only somebody, only somebody outside can do that.
Like, but you don't work with them every day.
So I think to some extent, you know, whether we like it or not, I mean, the merit has to be vouched for by the by the elected official, whether we agree with it or not, you know, I I think, you know, we would be the ones.
It's too late for merit-based at this point.
Yes.
You should, should have started that last year. So you could do it this year, start it this year.
So how many scenarios can you put together for the commission?
Yes.
I think that's what she.
Yeah, so.
No, I don't, I'm not asking her. I don't want her to do more work. I just wanted to talk this out. So you want to know whether we want to do it across the board of a
Yes.
X amount?
Yes.
Um.
I think, I think would be easier, the reason I've mentioned that is, is because we're trying to move as many deputies off the levy onto the county general account, and that is, that, and that's trying to be priority in that, but try to work in raises, too. I mean, that's, that's my suggestion, is across the board the same in moving the deputies off.
So can you give me an amount for across the board, like what you want to look at, and I, I mean, I have a spread, another spreadsheet. Who, I can plug that in to give me a number to plug it back in.
See, I feel better when you recommend amounts.
And I can live with that. I can live with her making the decision.
Yeah, because, so whatever, I can make work.
You know what the budget will.
With the percentage, with the, with the allocation of safetiness in there.
With an allocation.
Well, I, okay, if I, if I were to open my mind to an across-the-board, could you give us an across-the-board of a greater amount for those lower-paid people?
I can.
Okay.
However, it's up to the elected official how they allocate it. So you can say, I want to give these people.
No, 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 what I mean is, if we set a salary cap, so anybody who makes, I'll just throw something out there, hourly wage employees versus salary employees. So say we were going to give hourly wage employees X across-the-board raises, and then salaried employees, X across-the-board raises.
That's what I'm saying. You can say that, but once it goes into an elected official's budget, they allocate it how they want.
Yeah.
So just because you say, I want your hourly people to make this, and your salary people can have this raised, they could give it all to one person.
What's the point of across the board? If we set a thousand dollars per person, and they could say, I'm going to give five thousand dollars to this.
They can still allocate it how they want.
That's correct. That's part of their, that's part of them being the elected official.
That's, I mean, I mean, I guess if you argue the case that you're trying to bring up lower wages, but.
I know of one thing.
Have to.
I know of one thing, we need to look at the supervisors to Don one one seven.
Well, and that's a whole separate, thank God, they're separate.
They're different.
Yeah.
Okay.
Yeah, that's the nine one one fund separately than the general fund.
Okay.
The general fund and the coal severance fund have to be done by
End of this one.
Twenty eighth. And if you change stuff on the plan seven, I'm afraid I'll throw that in.
Yeah, I know. I experienced that.
Looking at you, because she's not looking at me. So.
Just because I made that mistake, it won't happen.
So you could. We'll shut them.
So, well, so it's still a risk, whatever kind, I would still like to do it, and and to let them know our intent is to do this.
Okay.
And if I found it, you know, I don't see any of them not giving them, but if, if, if any of them do, then, you know, they can deal with my stink eye later. When they come in and ask for something else.
I'm also going to say, you just created another spreadsheet, because everybody's lumped by department.
That's correct.
Now you want to buy salary versus hourly, hourly.
I thought you said you didn't want to give her any more work.
She just did.
Well, I don't listen, I'm just trying to do the right thing. We have underpaid people who would benefit a lot more from the pay raise than than, and I mean, everybody, I think most of our employees are underpaid by being county employees, but but I'm just saying, there are some people that really, I think, need an across-the-board, greater across-the-board wage than than the higher level of pay.
I mean, you could always say you're not going to improve minimum pay below a certain amount, but that doesn't help the people that's already here. So I also think that's a later.
What do you recommend?
Just an across-the-board, and if you want to get into specifics like that, you start looking at it now for next year, because it's fairly complex.
It takes time to do that.
I missed that.
We ran into that before. You asked your three times, what do you reckon?
I just went.
I'm going to mention it one time.
Okay, I'm used to it. Maybe are you all there? I'd rather not, because we've got a lot of work to do, but we can.
Let's do the requested. If you could send us the spreadsheet that shows across the board suggestive amounts, that would help. Um the one with the, the police going over. Of course, that's going to be varied because of the amount requested.
Mm-hmm.
So there's going to be a lot of extra sheets regardless of what you do, and I apologize for that. But we seem to be tasked with that for every year.
Well, I mean, you'd already done the math on, on the six, so I think the minimum.
On the six, I start now.
On the six, um.
Deputy.
Deputies.
Yeah, we started with ten. Bradley gave me a list.
Oh, did you?
And we submitted a spreadsheet, yeah.
Go from ten downs, would you say?
Ten, well, I mean, that's what I'm thinking, yeah.
Okay, I'm, I'm gay. I think, I think that.